Three seconds. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson. Onechel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. Three A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of November 1st, 2021. B is a motion to approve licenses for renewal of Class E liquor license, Class C beer permit, and Class B wine permit for C's liquor store and Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Plaza Mexico Mexican Restaurant, subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a motion to approve the Griffin Trust Fund Distribution for 2021 for $149.32 each to the Spencer J.C.'s and the Spencer Family YMCA and Head Start. Item D is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of the budgeted transfers for the month ending October 31, 2021. E is a resolution approving annual city street financial report for fiscal year 2020, 2021. F is a motion to approve the Iowa Plains Signing, Inc. as subcontractor for the 2021 Fourth Street Overlay Project. G is a motion to set the public hearing proposed redistricting plan for the city of Spencer, Clay County, for December 6th, 2021, as recommended by the Committee of the Whole on November 10th, 2021. H is a motion to approve purchase of John Deere 1600 Turbo Series 3 mower from C and B Operations for $66,052.50. That is after trade-in, and this is a CIP item. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Discussion or questions on any of the items?
Hey, I did see on the mower that it is under CIP, but it's under next year's CIP. Is that correct?
Yep. Jared, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, good evening. So it is done. It was scheduled to be replaced for next year's CIP. Here towards the end of the season, we had a major breakdown in that machine that we were going to replace. Those repairs were quite costly. They couldn't give us an estimate on just how much it's going to cost because of the time involved. They weren't sure how much time it was going to take. So I think rather than trying to fix it, keep it for a couple of months, and then replace it anyway, it was smarter for us to go ahead and try to purchase that now, especially with shipping delays and everything else. We have it ready to go for next season. So if we order it now, so. And they'll take the old one, and they'll repair it at their cost then at that point, too.
Okay. So Brian, how does that affect the budget since that was a budgeted item? And where does that come into effect?
Well, if need be, just for the spending authority, we may need to include it as part of an amendment, but due to the fact that the purchase has already been identified out of reserves, it's not going to change cash. You know, we have the cash to pay for it.
Right.
It just may be part of a future budget amendment if need be.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Ron. Any other questions on the items? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Onechel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye.
Thank you. Item four, old business. Four A is an ordinance closing and vacating portions of East 11th Street, First Avenue East, and Second Avenue East, and to confirm and authorize the conveyance and transfer of city property to the Spencer Municipal Hospital. This is the second filing. First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Lauren. I've had some questions on this. I would anticipate the third and final, after all the legalese and agreements and everything is done between the city and the hospital, probably post-New Year's, you know, January, February sometime. So I know the community had some questions on that. So this is the second reading, second filing, sorry. Any discussion questions related to this? All right, hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Onechel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye.
Thank you. Item five, new business. Five A is a motion to approve letter of support, excuse me, for Brian Bland's grant application for butchery innovation and revitalization program.
So move.
First by Donovan.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. I'll kick off the comments really quick. As I alluded to in the last meeting, Governor Reynolds has issued a program, and this is part of the support to apply for funds available through that program. Alec, do you want to touch on this a little more? Then we'll open the floor for questions.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, Mr. Bland here reached out and was interested in applying for this grant for this type of business in the city of Spencer. Still working on all the plans on that, and it's just a real good show of faith offer that the city of Spencer thinks this is a good program. We like the aspects of these businesses and want to show that support that we're working towards having something like this in the city.
Alec, question. You know, we're showing support for this, and we still don't have a zone. Does he have a property specific or possibly? Because I could see opening it up into an area, and then not, no businesses are available in that area. Is there some thought on where that zone would be?
Yeah, so from the last Committee of the Whole conversation, we took the planning, we took that meat processing, custom cut kind of butcher shop ideas back to planning and zoning, had those conversations, and we've, planning and zoning has since recommended back to councils when we get that meeting back to you. It's opened it up quite a bit, based on our previous conversations. That's kind of what we wanted to do. Left a lot of the governance of this type of business to whether or not we can provide the water strength and whether or not the Department of Agriculture approves of its location, so that type of stuff.
So it would still, it would have to go to the board for a variance or something?
No.
Not when this gets approved, if it gets approved?
If we move forward with what's been discussed, it opens it up to.
Well, let's be very clear. So Ron's question deals with approval.
Yep.
This is a letter of support.
Correct.
So the support is not approval.
No.
The support is part of the grant requirement, request to go to the state of Iowa.
Yes.
This does not mean we approve the project.
Correct.
Let's be very clear on that.
Yep. No, we're not signing off on anything of the project going forward. It's just, we think it's a good program if the council deems so.
And the sensitivity is a deadline set by the state of Iowa.
Yes.
For this.
Question. And we sent you to, you went to other communities, and what did you find out in those communities on some of this?
So a lot of the, I guess we're getting a little off topic, but.
Right.
These custom-type meat processing centers, what they normally do is have a specific day where they have inspectors come in, see all the meat that they process that day, and then that type of meat is what's sold at the front lines of their businesses. The rest of the days during their work week are filled by custom jobs where they bring in an animal, that a farmer or a customer has bought the animal, wants the animal processed, has the animal brought in, gets processed, takes the animal back. Those types of workloads are usually what they've been seeing in the surrounding area. As far as how it's regulated, there's not a whole lot on it besides how the state or beds, if they even get that many.
They have state inspectors that basically.
Yes.
Are basically handling the cleanliness or all that kind of paperwork and stuff, so.
Yes, quite heavily.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions or comments related to this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5B is a motion to approve change order number three to the wastewater treatment plant project for Phase Two for masonry walls, furring, and drywall on the former west side of the control building for an increase of $5,997.60 from the project contingency allowance. Just to be clear, while it is a change order, it is not an expansion of the already approved project. It is just pulling from the contingency. First by Tom. Second by Bill. Discussion or questions on this?
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, you bet. All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5C is a motion to acceptance of street pavement, yes, acceptance of street pavement from IGL Construction LLC Westfield by IGL First Edition and make it part of the public street system.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron.
I'll second it.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions on this?
So this is essentially they paved them, and they give them to the city.
Yep. Ross, maybe you want to talk a little bit about what the city goes through in order to make sure they're in spec and all those things?
Sure. So per the development agreement, the IGL Construction has constructed streets and sewer and water, as you'll see in the next item. And to do that, they have hired us as licensed engineers to write specs and inspect the project by city requirements. We believe everything has been constructed to specs and have submitted our letter of certification, so.
I did ask Mark White last week, so if it snows Thursday, do we go plow? And the answer is yes. Once the streets become ours, they are ours. Any other questions on 5C? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5D is a motion of acceptance of storm and sanitary sewer from IGL Construction LLC Westfield by IGL First Edition and make it part of the public sewer system. First by Lauren. Second by Bill. Any discussion or questions on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Five E is a resolution adopting a final assessment schedule for the city of Spencer 2020 substandard housing rehabilitation project and confirming and levying the assessments. First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Discussion or questions on this? Let's see. Brian, do you want to maybe touch on, we have a newly elected official that will be taking over, just really quick, where this program lies and how, this is the end result of it, but just the quick substandard housing rehabilitation project?
Yeah, so we, the, I think this is the second round or third, and we're going to get ready to do the third round, so we offer grants to any property that would be deemed substandard based on the code, and that could be siding, windows, electrical systems, HVAC, plumbing, foundations, anything that looks like it's a substandard property. We do offer a grant to help fix, help the property owners fix it up. We've hired Northwest Iowa Planning to administer it, and so then their process is they take applications about twice a year. We try to do five homes at a time just to get contractors around. And then, so they, the people apply, that we have it inspected to make sure that it is still a worthy structure, that it's not too far gone, so we're not putting money into a structure that after this is still going to be, need to be condemned or something. So they do have it inspected to make sure that it's still a viable structure. We take bids. We do bring up the structure to the minimum state codes, so that is done, the inspector lists all the things down, they meet with the property owner. The grant is up to a maximum of $24,999 on the primary structure. We also will assist with accessory structures to $9,999. Property owners are responsible for 10% of the lease that costs or 10% plus any overage. So if they, their total project's 30,000, their match would be about 7,000, so 10% of the 24,999 plus the overage of that. And then at the end, they have the ability to either, for their 10% in overage, they can either find other funding, so there's, you know, there's other housing programs out there. They can use that as their match to pay it back. They can get a bank loan, or we will put it on their taxes for 10 years, or I believe it's 10 years, for payment in equal installments. And so out of the 2020 projects, we had, I don't know, two decide not to write us a check and take the installment version, so that's what this is.
Thank you, Brian. One of the top questions we get asked as city council people is what are we doing for affordable housing? That's a buzz term that a lot of people use. And while we can't build, contribute to new construction at the cost of housing that is in this price range, as Brian talked about, it's a way for us to support and encourage the improvement of those properties into the affordable housing area, and so that's the intent of this program. So just wanted to visit that quick before we actually approve this. So any other comments or questions on that? Thank you, Brian. All right, hearing done. This is a roll call, so we will vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Onechel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye.
Thank you. Item 5F is a motion to approve change order number three to the 2021 Sewer Structure Rehabilitation Project for a deduction of $7,751.14 to reflect as-built quantities.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce.
First by Bill.
I'll second it.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions? Always good to see a deduction. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 5G is a resolution accepting work on the 2021 Sewer Structure Rehabilitation Project.
I'll move on that, Mayor.
First by Lauren.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Onechel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye.
Thank you. Item 5H is a resolution approving the final plat of the Eckert Land First Edition as a subdivision of the city of Spencer, Clay County, Iowa, including the development agreement. Don Hempel has informed me, there's a little clarification from the packet, but we'll take a first second, and then we can open it up for Don to clarify. First by Bill. Second by Tom. Don, would you like the floor quick?
Thank you, Mayor. The primary thrust of the development agreement concerned the construction of sanitary sewer in Sixth Avenue Southwest, which is included in the plat. That project is going to be slightly more than 18,000. That sewer will serve the adjacent lot, established lot in Haggadorn's Third Edition. As the, I originally prepared the development agreement, the owner of that lot was simply going to reimburse the developer for the cost of that sewer. But now it appears that that might not happen right away. So the change is the cost of the sewer to serve Haggadorn's Third Edition, the city will reimburse the developer for that, and then the city will impose a connection fee in like amount when that connection is made. Questions?
Any questions for Don? Thank you for the clarification and the update, Don. So we have a first, we have a second. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, I'm just happy to see that we're getting some subdivisions here on private individuals that are going ahead to develop. That's what we like to see out here. We don't like to see the city being in the development business, so these are two longtime citizens that have been in the community a long time, and it's nice to see them moving forward with these projects.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Onechel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye.
Thank you. Item 5I is a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Cotton's First Commercial Edition as a subdivision of the city of Spencer, Clay County, Iowa, including a development agreement. I believe Alec has had the opportunity to get in touch with all of the elected officials on this to clarify any questions they had.
So move on that, Mayor.
First by Lauren. Second by Donovan. Discussion, questions on this? All right, hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Onechel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye.
Thank you. Item six, engineers report. Ross, you look like the only engineer in the crowd.
I think we had this discussion last time I was here. Quick update on the Fourth Street Overlay Project. Pillar, Inc. is the concrete subcontractor. They continue to work on manhole adjustments and water valve adjustments. They've got quite a bit of work left, concrete work left to do involving curb and gutter and sidewalk ramps, and I believe they're going to have a hard time getting that work done this year. So I think what we'll see is have some carryover work till the spring. And as far as working days, their contract working days are pretty much up after last week, so they've taken quite a bit of time, and we'll probably be having some discussions about that next spring. So it is a DOT project, so they set the working days, and they also help reinforce any overages. Yep.
What happens with the manhole covers that are not lifted, then? They just, are they?
So that's what Pillar's focusing on this week, and we're hoping that they can get them done this week. If they can get three or four per day, then we should be able to get them done.
Okay.
So that's definitely the focus, to make sure we have access to the manholes and also the water valves for the winter.
It's the biggest comment I get is the obstacle course around.
It is. It's definitely an obstacle course yet, so I'd say in terms of completion, they may, how do I say that? We were maybe expecting them to be a little quicker than they are, and I think they're, the general contractor maybe also did, too. So I think they're fighting a little bit of what everybody else is in terms of shortage of workers and being able to retain the people that they hire. So I think that's a little bit of it for them. They're also a pretty new company, so. And then as far as asphalt work, the overlays are obviously done. Blacktop Services will be in tomorrow with the warm weather to do some driveway wedges, so they should get the asphalt work all wrapped up tomorrow, and then we'll just have concrete work left. And then on the West Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue West Storm Sewer Project, Adam Gloss with BD Construction, they started laying storm sewer pipe today. They've been waiting on some materials, which include manholes, T-manholes, and also the apron to get started. So I think that's been a little bit of a challenge for them, waiting for things, but hopefully they'll get going and get that project under construction, so. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Russ. Item seven, city managers report. Dan?
So I've spent the last two weeks meeting a lot of people, going to a lot of meetings, learning a lot, and in my spare time, I've been reading a lot of policies and procedures and stuff that that city has, so I'm getting, starting to get my feet on the ground. It's been, it's been pretty good. Most of the people I met have been just fine, so pretty happy to say that.
We won't share the other list.
Any questions for Dan? All right, thank you. Mayor's report, just a couple items. I'd like to thank all the, Donovan's looking at me like, yeah, you don't have a couple items. I'd like to thank everyone who voted. It was a record turnout in recent history at our local election. We had over 1,800 voters that turned out. We've been averaging about 1,100 to 1,200, so thank you for taking the time to either vote early ahead of Election Day or on Election Day. I'd like to congratulate the candidates, not just the winning candidates, but all candidates who ran. I think, as I have encouraged before, everyone should really consider running for a public office position. You learn a lot more about yourself and who you are and the community that you serve, and so I think everybody in the process who ran, it's a win, and then some get to continue to serve in an official capacity, and so we appreciate everyone who ran. My time has been spent mainly since our last meeting in some transition meetings with Mayor Bumgarth, upcoming Mayor Bumgarth. I guess he's not sworn in yet, but he will be coming down the road here, and Dan and I have spent some time together. Want to touch a little bit post-election, the sanctity of the dais that you see up here where we all sit. You see our name tags on the video and on TV, and you'll notice that the difference between state officials and federal officials and us is we do not have a letter behind our last names, and that's very intentional. Local politics is not partisan. We all have certainly personal opinions. We all have different political viewpoints, but when it comes to get the work of the community done, and you've heard this from several politicians, that we put all of that aside, and we don't bring partisan politics into our discussions. We truly have you, the constituent, in mind, and we try to make the best informed decisions that we can to move the community forward. And so with that, I would just like to remind all of the passionate people who got behind different candidates or brought some partisan politics into the local race, I would just encourage you to really reflect on the fact that we're not partisan at this dais. We truly view each other as peers, and we view you as neighbors and friends and people who we represent. And so just a word of encouragement to everybody as we move forward that we are your servants. We're here to watch after your local government, and we all do it, I think, from a place of humility and intention of serving you the best that we can. So I wanted to touch on that. I also spent some time with a couple who have an easement request that will be coming our way. It was initially going to be on the agenda for tonight, and I pulled it off. The reason being, we're going to talk about it in committee. It's a project that the staff recommends. I think it will go through fine, but it's a component of a larger discussion, and so had a great meeting with them last week for about an hour and a half in my office down at the business, and just wanted to thank them for taking the time to come down. We ended up calling Don, took some time out of his night, and Alec did, and so just wanted to let you know that while you don't see your government all the time behind the scenes, we are busy working for your benefit, and I look forward to that discussion coming up about structures on easements in the near future, and then we can get their particular requests wrapped up. Budget season's coming up. As I tell you every year, contact your local officials if you're really passionate about something that we spend money on, or you don't want to see money spent on, or how we're spending your money. We tax you, we collect it, and then we try to give you the best return possible on that. And so we begin that process in the next, well, it's going on right now, but on the council side. going on right now, but on the council side, it'll start here in a couple weeks. Happy Thanksgiving. We won't meet again until after Thanksgiving. Like to encourage everyone to gather with your family, spend time together. This year offers hopefully a little bit of more family certainty and travelability than last year, and so really just take the time to celebrate the connections that we all have. Press conferences, I have two left. I'll be doing one here towards the end of the month. I'll do another one in December. Those will be my normal ones, and time allowing, I might do a third one at the end of the year for a little self-indulgence and reflection on the last four years. And so, just wanted to let you know, those will be coming up. Finally, it is Men's Health Awareness Month, I heard on the radio. That'll cost you a buck, George. KICD, fine. And so, you know, they encourage you to grow facial hair for Men's Health Awareness Month, and so I thought, in honor of Donovan, I would put some gray in my beard, so, so that he would not be the only one, I guess Bill too, but, you know, up here for Men's Health Awareness Month. But on a serious note, for all the fellow men out there, and, and everybody just in general, you know, take some time to take care of yourself and make sure you get checked up and checked out and stay healthy. So, with that, are there any questions? Hearing none, we will move on. That's on my agenda. We are on nine council and committee reports, upcoming meetings.
I'm not aware of anything at the moment for...
Here's your cheat sheet.
Oh, now I know. And thanks for pushing my button. There's a...
Donovan always pushes buttons.
There's a Northwest Iowa League meeting in Hinton on Thursday night. If you want to attend, I believe I'm going to, I, I'll get put down and go to that. And along with somebody drives, because I don't see well, very well at night anymore. Part of the aging process.
Yeah, there's Brian, but we ride with him every day.
And then the next, the next city council meeting on December 6th.
Yeah, we, oops, sorry.
Turn it off.
Yeah, right. I think Brian did. Brian turned me off. Alright, we will need a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the easement that got pulled. What's everybody's availability like?
Are you looking this week, or are you looking...
Next Monday.
Either late this week or next week.
I think Tuesday we got a basketball game, so Tuesday on...
Okay. I wouldn't anticipate a half hour, you know, maybe.
You got Monday night?
One, Monday work? Does that work?
Five thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be a maybe, but...
Okay. Sounds good?
Yeah.
Five thirty?
Yeah, five thirty Monday.
Five thirty?
Yeah. Thank you. Alright.
With the Northwest Iowa League, that's their annual scholarship auction meeting. So, I'll, I'll, I'll be joining Dan going. So, well, if anyone else goes, we'll let you know what time we're going to leave, because Hinton's a little bit of a jaunt from here, so.
This week, this Thursday?
Yeah.
I'm out.
So, yeah.
I'll check it.
Very good.
It's a good cause.
Yes, it is. We putting a gift basket together, I assume?
We will.
To take down?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
Got some auto perks there?
Yeah, we could donate some stuff, no problem. I'll just bill you for it, Brian. It'll be good. Alright, item 10 is a motion to approve bills and claims. First by Bill, second by Tom. Any discussion or questions?
You will see some additional ones in front of you.
Yep. Looks like two sheets that didn't make the packet.
Yeah, they, the one sheet was ones that are reoccurring that the interim AP clerk forgot to run on November 1st, meaning myself. And the other ones are for the November's local option sales tax payments to the county and school.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions on item 10? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 11, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the floor? Just a reminder to state your name and address for the record book.
Sure. My name is Lenny Scaletta, 709 East 12th Street. I'd just like to say I've been here for about five months, and it's just a great community. And I want to tell everybody that every time I've called the city, you know, you gotta, gotta call them to set up, you know, utilities and different things like that, or, hey, I've got a question, or what about this? Every time, they've been super duper friendly. They've been just great. Just like, I really want to help you. They, they work as a team. They work really good, so I'd like to thank them.
Thank you, Lenny.
Awesome. Thank you.
And Lenny moved here from Avoca, right?
Right.
Alright, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Bill?
Four years ago, I threatened not to run again, and this time it is not a threat. I will not seek reelection in two years. I'll be approaching the 78th birthday, so it's time to move on. I've, I've enjoyed the, by then it'll be 18 years, probably off and on. Theresa can give me the exact months and years. But if you're a, a citizen of the Board Two, and if you have any questions about it, please give me a call. My phone number is on the city directory. It's been a pleasure for me to serve, and I'll have other comments later. And I want to, I want to add a comment regarding the non-partisanship of this, of this dais. Steve and I joke about it for years. He sat to my right, and, and I sat to his left, so.
You can guess where their personal politics lie. Possibly the opposite of where they sit.
You hear the mayor said, "Don't bring it up," and you did.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else like the, the podium, the floor? Alright, seeing none, we will move to item 12. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tracy says aye.
Yeah, Tracy normally does. Tracy via Tom.
We might just stay.
Alright, second by Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Standard unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.